We're right at 7 o'clock, so I'll call tonight's city council meeting to order. And Jolene, could we have a roll call, please? Jolene, you just roll for the record.
I will.
Got it. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Council, we have an agenda before you. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
Also move.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. And our agenda is approved. Our next item is open forum. Open forum is any interested party's opportunity to address council on any topic of your choosing. And Mayor Plots.
Good evening.
Welcome.
I'm Mayor Plots. I live at 6485 184th Street North. I'm Vice President of Forest Lake Athletic Association Board, and I'm here to talk about the proposed Parks Commission to remove the voting right from a member of the FLOW board to serve on their end of school council. We find that very offensive. We've spent many years supporting that field before the city could do it, for probably 10 years. We put all the bases out. We chalked fields. We dragged fields. We aligned them. We did all that before the city got involved. And now the Parks Commission is coming along, and they would like us to serve on their board without a voting right. Are we about voting rights in this country? I mean, it's pretty important. If I should have some of you serve and then not be able to vote on what happens, that would be terrible. So to remove that from the people that have put all their sweat and tears into that, to grow that facility what it is today now, and then say, ah, we'd like you to serve on the board, but really can't vote on anything that's going to happen here. That would be absolutely insane. I mean, we haven't had a city council rep on our FLOW board. We used to have one that attended pretty regularly since Kelly Monson. She was the last one. We serve thousands of kids in this community, so I would think that the least we could have is one vote on a park board commission. That's one of the major premier parks in the city. We bring in thousands of people to play softball, football, baseball, lacrosse, and we should get no response or input onto what's going on and a vote on that? I said, I think that's just way out of line for the board to even, the council city council to even be considering allowing the park board to pass that.
I'm glad you're here, and we will have more discussion on this topic as we consider this item. I wonder if there's been something lost in translation, but that's something we can talk more about when we get to that agenda item.
Okay, great, thank you.
Glad you're here. Thanks for the input. Is anybody else that would like to speak as part of open forum this evening? All right. We will bring agenda back to council. Council, for your consideration, tonight is our consent agenda. And on our consent agenda this evening, we have items 6A through 6R. I will entertain a motion or any changes to the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through R.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. And consent agenda is approved. Our next item, moving on to the regular agenda. Our next item is consideration of Public Services 2023 Services Review. And Bev Mathiason is here this evening. Is anybody else presenting prior to Bev? Bev, welcome if you'd like to come to the podium.
Thank you so much. It's great to be back. Okay. So I'm here this evening to share some really good news and a lot of data from 2023. Recycling. I'm sorry to interrupt. We're having technical difficulties that were supposed to have been corrected today, and they seem to be continuing. So just a moment here.
They're all up.
Oh, yay.
They were, they just flickered off.
Yeah.
Except for mine.
They come and go.
And now mine is off.
Let's see about this. Nope, nothing. Did your monitors do anything?
No.
It kind of turned to a blue screen on ours.
Turned to a blue screen.
It's the same screen as what's on the side.
Okay. Remnants?
Here we got it. Oh.
Well, I'm going to go and print these for you guys.
They're in our packet.
They are in our packet.
They are in the packet, that's true. The other ones in the packet.
They're up now.
That's right. She actually, it's a different one because.
It's a different.
So should I go through this now?
Why don't, yes, why don't we have you go? We can follow along. It's in our packet if you just want to give us guidance on which slides you're speaking to.
Actually, it's not in your packet.
Oh.
There was a.
I'm sorry.
The wrong one went in the packet. This is the correct.
Let's hold until we can get them printed, then.
Okay.
We just got the correct one this evening while I was going back and forth. So just a minute here, and it's going to the printer. I'm going to try one other thing real quick. Are your monitors on?
Yes.
When Plan B fails, go to Plan C.
We've had a few plans this evening, and I started it. All transparency.
Bev, do you just want to let me know when to progress the slides? And I can do that for you. Sure. I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. Again, I'm here to present the 2023 reporting for recycling. I've got some really fun news to share tonight. You can move to the next slide, please. And so I wanted to first let you know we've had some nice shifts in terms of the types of recycling that people are doing, you know, in terms of size. We're always trying to divert more and more of the material from trash to recycling, and we're starting to see a nice shift there. I have the container counts on your presentation there. And the really neat thing about this slide is that 79 households with the 96 gallons decreased their carts to either the 65 or the 32 gallon. So that was a really nice shift to see as we continue to, you know, to get closer to that zero waste goal for the state of Minnesota. This is really wonderful to see. Next slide. Okay. On this slide here, our tonnages. Tonnages have been something to really watch since the pandemic. During the pandemic time, we saw the tonnage rise significantly. And since the pandemic, a lot more folks have gone back to work. People have gone back to schools. We're starting to, you know, we're starting to see some things normalize there. Although we see the recycling tonnage decreasing, that is normal. We're seeing that in other cities. We're seeing that most people are back now, so I would expect that that number will hold pretty steady from this point forward. We still have some folks working at home in hybrid situations, but I think for the majority of us, we're all back in the office now. So we'll keep an eye on the tonnages, watch what's happening, and report back again next year. And the next slide. This is the best slide. It's really good news. You know, when we first started working with you folks and working with city staff on recycling education, some of the areas were as high as 30% contamination. And so a lot of education efforts have happened over the last several years. In 2021, our audit that we did, we had 18% contamination in that audit. In '22, it went down to 10%, and I'm so excited to tell you that in 2023, it was down to 6%. Our recycling center, our limit is 15%. That's always the goal, under 15%, and that's set by the state. So to have a 6%, do you know how significant that is? You're in the top three cities that I manage the contracts for Republic. So this is a really great news slide here for all of you. And kudos to staff for helping educate the residents. So really great. You can see in terms of the material types, we're collecting a lot of OCC. What that is is old corrugated cardboard. So we get a lot of cardboard in the recycling stream and also a lot of mixed paper. And then you can see the other percents there listed. So really great news to see a 6%. It's rare that I see that. The next one is how happy are the residents with the service? We have surveys. If a resident calls in with a complaint or even a billing inquiry, they may be surveyed. We're all measured in terms of our success at the business unit and how satisfied are our customers? How likely are they to refer us to others? So here's just a sampling of some of the comments from the surveys. I'm really pleased also to tell you that granted, I get the escalations from the city, and there are months that can go by, and I've not heard an escalation. So we are, it means that we're taking care of things. When there is an issue or problem, we're taking care of it right away. But it's been really quiet, so knock on wood. We're pleased. The next slide. In 2024, we've got some more planning to do. There have been a lot of staff changes since the beginning of the year, but we stayed up with a lot of wonderful things here. Next on our agenda will be the winter preparation. We had a very mild winter last year, which was very nice for us. It was very kind. Great for Public Works, too, I'm sure. But we do have some private roads that we have had some concerns with in the past. We have, we also want to partner with Public Works to make sure that we're set up for winter, should it be a real winter this year. Being able to get down all the streets safely and service is certainly very important. And then the next slide is something new. So we continue to elevate our customer experience. We have our call center. We have our local business unit, myself and staff. But what we implemented here late in 2023 was artificial intelligence in a system. So now we're able to pull reports and understand very quickly if an agent is in need of coaching on any of these areas, and mainly demonstrating ownership. Yes, customer, I'm going to help you. We will get this fixed, or we will get this resolved. And then the act of listening, having a real discussion with the resident, acknowledging the stated issues. Yes, I understand. This is the problem. Let's take, let's work together. I'll get this taken care of for you. And then asking those meaningful questions, the questions behind, you know, really digging in to find out what is the root cause here? So the agent can take that back to the hauling location so we can dispatch a truck, make a phone call, get things taken care of very quickly. So this is something our coaches now are looking at. They're pulling active reports. There are times, you know, where if we've had a weather event, they'll want to do audits to find out how are you handling those calls? So this has really elevated our whole customer experience, and we've been pleased with this new program so far, this software. The next piece, this just tells a little bit more about what we're really focusing on those calls. We want to make sure that it's a good tone, not, you know, this person was very crabby on the phone. We want our residents to have a good experience. Also demonstrating empathy, active listening, those probing questions to really root cause, and just get it done with a one-call resolution. I think that's what we all want. Any questions about 2023 or any potential concerns you have in 2024?
Any questions, council? Just for those that are watching, can somebody just give a recap on where we are with contracting? I know we just did a renewal, but can somebody just?
Sure. We are finishing up the first contract, and that ends December 31 of 2024. The new contract goes into effect January 1 of 2025. It's a five-year contract. And I'm sure that when we update the microsite on Forest Lake's website, what we'll do then is we'll work with city staff to be able to post the new contract if you wish. And certainly, we'll update the rates on the microsite and anything that should change. It's really pretty close to the same contract. There were very few revisions.
I think also hearing back from feedback on residents on the service and the annual rate increases as they go into effect. Just a reminder, we should do some additional, just education in social media of what the increase is, and then also breaking out the tipping fees. That's the portion that's outside of everyone's control and.
I think that's a great idea.
Helpful to proactively in front of that. Just remind everybody that this is the contract, what to expect with rate. Get that teed up for some social media outreach.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think that's a great idea. And as soon as those tipping fees, as soon as the county's tipping fees are released, we'll be able to start doing that.
Anything else on this topic tonight, council? All right. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Our next item on our agenda is the amended Parks and Recreation Coordinator job description and authorization for advertising. Christina.
Mayor and council, we last talked about how to fill the vacancy in the Park and Rec Supervisor position at the May 28 meeting. We'd had some discussions at that meeting about creating a mid-management level position in Public Works. The staff and I talked about this over the last couple of months, and we're coming back with you tonight for your consideration of a different proposal. We revised it, the position, to be a Park and Rec Coordinator position. We do still feel really strongly that it should be in Public Works so that all of the parks' functions are within one department rather than split across Public Works and Community Development. We heard some concerns last time about the cost of the mid-management position, and we think we can make it work at the same grade six as the previous position, but again, aligning it with Public Works so that there can be some better synergies there. So included in your packet tonight is a copy of that updated job description. Same grade level, so the fiscal impact we had had in the budget was that higher position. If you choose to go this route, it'll be a savings of about $30,000 that will get to reduce the proposed 2025 budget pie. And with that, I will answer any questions. And I know that Director Adams and Director Whitman can help as well.
Thank you, Abby. Council, open it up. Any questions, comments on the revisions that have been made? Feedback or concerns? I'm happy to see the adjustments that, adjustments made to this that, you know, kind of based on council's last round of feedback. I'm happy to support this this evening, but also want us to have conversation if anything's needed. Should, oh, go ahead.
So I think I voiced a concern the first time around on this, and I'm just, Public Works, we're told all the time, is overworked and understaffed. I understand we're adding another position here, but I just, I'm a little hesitant, but if this is what staff is recommending strongly, I'd like the opportunity to at least review it in another six months to nine months to see if this is really the model we want to move, use going forward. And if we have that opportunity, then I'm willing to support this tonight. But I just, you know, and maybe also would help once the Parks Commission is placed. Their feedback on how they think it works has to be valuable. Been concerned without having that for this long a time, especially making a major decision like this without public feedback from folks like those. So those are my hesitancies, but I would support it if we can review it within at least the year, nine months.
Are you open to getting through a first year? I always think you have to get through the first round of everything first to really get a full cycle. I worry about doing something six months in, and we're still adjusting, and there's a lot of get up to speed.
Yeah. Unless there was some flags that were, just something wasn't, was amiss or wasn't working the way maybe staff thought it would, a year's fine.
Does that seem workable as, plan to do a reevaluation within a year and?
Yeah, I think a full cycle, just through everything. I mean, there's the events in the summer, through the wintertime, through contracts, through everything. It's, you're going to need a year to know if it works or not, regardless of where you put it. So I think to reevaluate this time next year is probably a good thing.
Timeline, if council approves this this evening, is the timeline to post it immediately and to start recruiting?
Yes, we would post it tomorrow for three weeks and hopefully be doing interviews in September and getting somebody seated October, November-ish.
That's good. Please.
Sorry. I just wanted to echo Councilmember Roberts' concerns because, as stated prior, that I'm, I like the compromise, too, because I'm just worried that putting more work on Dave, knowing that Public Works is already kind of strapped with the workers and the workload and the concerns that have come from city council to Dave, that I would be concerned that with where we want to see parks going into the future and with a new board coming on and all of the policies we want to look at and anything new coming within parks, I'd be concerned that parks would kind of become, get pushed under the rug. And I just don't want that for us. So as long as we can remember to keep parks an important department within our infrastructure, I think that's important. And then, again, coming back and looking at and just making sure that if we need changes, then let's make those changes because we don't want to see what happened going to be two years ago and a few months happen again. So just making sure that it's working for everyone and for staff in the community.
Just to add one comment, I think the former coordinator position, it's going to be the same. That's all they're going to focus on is Parks and Rec. It'll just be, you have that supportive Public Works. So if you have a Parks Commission that wants to know about a park, or we need to get something fixed at a park, or that you're going to have Public Works as that support, it'll be a quicker response time with maintenance and myself as overlooking that. Sometimes I think where that got divided is we had administration here in Public Works where sometimes, you know, things got lost. So I think this position is not going to change of what that person does. It's, that's what they're going to do is Parks and Rec. It's just they're going to have myself and Parks Foreman and a whole Public Works staff to support that. So I just, yes, it's going to be more work, and there's going to be a learning curve, and there's going to be some pain there just to try to get it all figured out. But I think honestly, it fits in there better just of what Parks does and, you know, what we need to do there. So I think you're going to have support on all that, even with council agendas where you want to talk about park development. Well, you're going to have support of myself or Parks Foreman to know what it's going to take to maintain stuff and all that. So yes, it's going to be extra work for the next year or so to try to get this person on board. It's going to take a full cycle, but I really think you're going to see that's going to work pretty well being in that department. But yes, I'm not the biggest fan of taking all the rest of the work on, but I think that's, I think that's where, I think that's where it belongs. And this person's, that's what, that's all they're going to do is Parks and Rec. They're not going to be doing maintenance or doing anything else. It's just, it's going to be supported by Public Works.
I think it's important that this position isn't an island. And I think the last position, there was just reporting directly to, for a period of time, reporting directly to the city administrator and kind of always being split between Community Development and Parks. We saw some disadvantages of that, and so being kind of in part of the same, everyone's kind of reporting up through the same structure. I think there's some benefits, but also, again, let's leave room for that to be adjusted as needed, just like we would any other staffing position. If it's not working, let's adjust it in the future. But I think the headliner here is let's get recruiting on this position. I feel strongly that this position having, being in place is important as we're thinking about bringing that Parks Commission back online. And I know that there's a lot of, everyone's very anxious to do that, and so I think this is step one. Any other points of feedback or questions? Ready for a motion if anyone's ready? I'd move that council approve the Parks and Recreation Coordinator job description and authorize staff to advertise for applicants at grade six. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. And motion carries. Our next item this evening is the Parks and Recreation Commission ordinance. And Emmy.
Thank you, Mayor Bayne, members of the council. In January of 2023, you adopted ordinance number 721 that had repealed and replaced the city code pertaining to the former Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission. And at that time, the ordinance outlined the roles and responsibilities of a new Parks and Recreation Commission, as well as the two departments that were managing the park system. Since the adoption of the ordinance, no commission has been appointed as the city is now transitioning parks into a division of Public Works. It is time to start looking at reinstating that commission. Looking at the ordinance, amendments were needed to remove references to Community Development out. As I mentioned, even, I think, probably in January of 2023, it's unconventional to be outlining staff duties in city ordinance. So we knew that amendment was necessary. We came back to you earlier this year to discuss the ordinance to talk about any other potential changes that might be needed. One of them at that time, as was brought up earlier in the open forum, was the membership from the Area School District and Athletic Association, both parties that were contacted by city staff about their interest in serving in these roles. In discussions with the council, the council had directed staff to look at adding in ad hoc positions that would be in the room, a part of dialogue, be able to help inform the commission, but allowing that commission to make decisions. Now, that being said, the commission would be made up of voting members of the community, and any voting member of the community could also serve on FLOW or be a part of the school district. So tonight before you is an ordinance 740 that codifies the direction provided by the council previously. You have the options to move to approve ordinance 740 with or without modifications. You can direct us to amend it and bring it back before you. Staff would recommend that the council move to approve the ordinance as it's related to the Parks and Recreation Commission as presented, and then approve the resolution that authorizes summary publication of. the resolution that authorizes summary publication of ordinance 740. I'm certainly available if you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Abby. Council, let's open it up. Questions, comments? So, I know we've had some back and forth discussion on kind of role of, so role of the FLAW and role of the school district. And I just want to start by saying, from the start of this process, the goal has always been to have a tight partnership there and to have not just a dotted line, may I say dotted line, we've, we recognize that we had a FLAW representative from council that would attend FLAW meetings. We also had a Fenway Park Advisory Board that would meet occasionally to talk about Fenway Park and we also had a park commission. And over time, through discussions, if I can just summarize, it, it felt very disjointed. And so, as we were reconsidering what the park commission should look like, the goal was, or the, the conversation and motivation has always been, can we just bring these things together rather than having these separate conversations about what's happening with the FLAW advisory representative and what's happening with the Fenway Park Board, which is not the full park commission? Let's just bring everybody under the same roof. And so, that was the intent. And, and then, and then as that was evolved, we did get some community feedback that said, wait, why are you taking two positions and kind of removing two community members and giving them to the school district and to FLAW, which is, I believe, good feedback, right? We're, we're essentially taking two community members and kind of taking them off the table and giving those to a designated position. I believe we've also heard some feedback and staff, please correct me if I'm wrong, that maybe, maybe more on the school district part based on the feedback we just heard from FLAW of, they don't necessarily need to be at every single meeting and maybe don't need to be a voting member. So, I think what we've tried to do is to find what is the right position to get everybody at the same table and in the right seat that's appropriate for their role, not to exclude, not to not give voting rights, not to not give a voice, but to also practically recommend or recognize that there are going to be things that come in front of the park commission that either, either of those bodies may or may not want to have a strong voice in. And so, if we've got it not right, I, I'm okay, like, let's get this right. But I just want to be clear on what the motivation has been, is, which is to have clear communication, to again, get everybody at the same table with the same information rather than kind of this piecemeal relationship governance approach that we had previously. I guess with, with that, I'm open to feedback on or thoughts on what should we do with the, the kind of the, the two positions that are currently listed as advisory, is ex officio, is that what the language that we're using?
Correct. Ad hoc, actually.
Ad hoc. I'm open to thoughts from council on solving for this.
Well, I was going to say, why would we do that? I mean, what, what motivation or what, what could it possibly be better?
Than to have them vote?
And rather than having them vote, you know?
Well, I think, so maybe Christina and Abby, maybe we haven't thoroughly vetted kind of the needs of what's, what the needs are going to be for participation with both the district and FLAW because I, I believe there's, there, why wouldn't we do that? You know, your question is why wouldn't they be a voting member? There may be certain topics that, or certain meetings that are not pertinent and they may not wish to always have full participation like you would if you were, you know, at every single monthly park commission meeting.
Mayor, my recollection of our earlier conversations were also that, and again, perhaps more towards the school district, that it was hard to get folks to show up. And so, one of the advantages of having them as non-voting members is they don't count against your quorum quota. So, again, they can still be there, be part of the discussions, but if for whatever reasons, you know, they have, have challenges in either appointing people or getting people to show up, it's not harming the commission in that way would be one reason to go non-voting.
And if you, if I might add, I think one of the comparable commissions for the city is the EDA where you have membership from the county's CDA and our local Chamber of Commerce, two agencies that we really rely on partnerships with, but that aren't necessarily voting members. We already kind of have that model in place where our closest partners are at the table, are a part of the dialogue, most often when it's, you know, relevant or most important, but leaving it up to the citizens to make the decisions.
So, in previous commissions or with the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission, I mean, had either the school district or FLAW had any sort of a voting position at all to inform?
No, nor even the ex officio role or advisory role. It was certainly invited member, invited, you know, guests from time to time, public meeting, always welcome to participate, but not, certainly not a formal seat at the table. And so, this was our, again, trying to come out of this, we've got a, you know, a separate working group, we've got a liaison position, trying to bring that together was the motivation.
It was really not a takeaway in that respect from historical
Right.
Practice.
Right.
And to an earlier point, if somebody from Forest Lake also served on FLAW, they would absolutely have an opportunity to have a voice. So, there is a path to that end.
Right. Not a takeaway, but also to Mr. Potts's point during open forum, that Fenway Advisory Board, in anticipation of this, that Fenway Advisory Board has not met, right? And we also have not been appointing a FLAW liaison and we, we did that in anticipation of this move, thinking that this move was right around the corner, you know? Again, we've, this has been delayed. And so, there's, I mean, that is fair criticism that we have not had that seat at the table. I, I do have, I, I think, Councilmember Roberts, go ahead.
Okay, so I, I, I think this is a positive. We have an official seat at the table now, they do, the school district and, and FLAW. I don't know what the percentage is, but I have to guess that out of all the decisions that the park board's making, maybe only half of those are related to the school district or what FLAW has to do with it. So, I think it's important to have residents who are taxpayers in the community making that final decision on some of those things. To Director Whitman's point, we, I've been on the EDA for a number of years. We had two people that were non-voting and we valued their opinion and took that in just as much as staff or, or even our own opinions. So, I think it's great that they're involved. I just am concerned about the voting part of it and they'll certainly have a seat at the table and all ears and eyes open because we value those relationships.
I am a little hesitant to move forward tonight though, just, I, just based on the emotion and the, the sentiment that was expressed during open forum, I think rather than just, yes, we heard you, but we feel otherwise, I would rather us table this tonight and have staff have a conversation with both entities just to clarify what is the intent and to just make sure that it is agreeable. And if it's not agreeable, let's, this isn't, this isn't to create an ordinance that creates some level of conflict. And if we're not there yet, let's take a timeout, table this tonight and then bring it back once we've had a broader conversation with both parties would be my recommendation, but I.
Is this the first feedback we've heard from FLAW and/or have we heard anything from the school district on this?
No, and to fair point, Mayor Bayne's, we didn't necessarily reach out to them. We had reached out to both parties numerous times to see about finding an appointee or having one of their appointees fill out an application. We've been, you know, soliciting commission applications for quite some time. We haven't, neither party has brought forward that. I understand the concerns that were brought up tonight and understand that we should take some opportunity to discuss with our partners. The only other thing that I would just ask and it might be a legal question, both of these parties, the school district and FLAW, we either give or receive money to as part of our operations of the Parks and Recreation Commission. And so, I don't know if, I defer to you, Mayor Bayne, if you want to ask legal counsel whether or not that would impact the city's decision on having voting members from these organizations.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor, Council. So, under the conflict of interest rules and laws of the state, if you are going to financially benefit from some sort of a, an agreement, you obviously cannot vote on that agreement. So, depending upon what sorts of, you know, things are coming before the park board, the very votes that they may want to vote on, they may be precluded from voting due to a conflict of interest issue.
Would, under our new structure with them being a recommending body to council and council being the contracting body, can they vote to recommend to council or is that in and of itself a conflict?
So, that would fall under the, the gray area. So, it would be the Loons v. what, the watershed case. So, there's, there's the factors. I would caution against it because it's still, they do have a financial interest at the end of the day that they would be receiving on the contract. So, if somebody wanted to object potentially, there could be an objection to the, to the validity of the contract essentially.
I, I still feel like it's worth a follow-up conversation with both parties just to be clear on intent. I would move that we, before I move, because as soon as I move, we're going to stop conversation. Is there other questions or conversation on this? I would move that council table the consideration of ordinance 740 until our next council meeting and direct staff to have conversation with both interested parties just to clarify the nature of the ordinance. Is there a second?
A second.
You have a motion and a second. Moves don't have, or motions to table don't have discussion, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose and motion carries. Our next item this evening is consideration of the predatory offender registration ordinance and Captain Henigraff.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Before you, you have a packet which is a ordinance that restricts predatory offenders on where they can reside in our city. We are not the first to the table on this. We are one of the last to the table. There are many municipalities around the metro area that already have this. When I started to develop this ordinance, I took a lot of takeaways from a lot of different municipalities that were similar in our size, our geographics, everything else. One thing that remains consistent is that prohibits distance from schools, daycares and any other area where we feel that like a city park would be subject to that. The 1,200-foot rule that's in your packet, that is a compromise from different municipalities. Some are less, some are greater. So, the way that this ordinance is lined out, it is not egregious or it is not lacking on any teeth on the way it's done. So, in front of you as well, which are also copies, is the Minnesota Department of Nullification Act. And I just want you to be aware of why it's very difficult for the police department in general on how we can release any information on predatory offender. If someone is convicted of a certain crime against a person, specifically a sexual offense, and that person does not go to prison, meaning they don't go a year and a day, that means that they are unassigned a level, which still requires them to register as a predatory offender. However, we cannot release any information on them. So, when you look at that, when you look at a level one, level two, level three, obviously level three is somebody that we can have a community nullification and tell everybody this is a crime they're committed of or convicted of. But the unassigned, the level ones and even some of the level twos are the ones that we cannot discuss, we cannot give out information on. This ordinance, the way that it's written out, is going to prohibit anyone trying to come into our city to reside on where they can be. And the reason we want that is to keep the community safe, keep our kids safe. It allows us to have a better track on where these parties are residing in our city. The map that is also in your packet, I created that and it is saved on the Bolton and Menck site. So, if anyone has any further questions, like if we're within two feet or three feet, we can go on that site and I can measure that distances. If anything new comes into the city, any registered daycare centers, anything like that, we can update that map and answer any questions for that.
Thank you, Council. Let's open it up for discussion or any consideration. Captain, you made a comment that it, this ordinance gives us an opportunity to better track. Does it give us an opportunity to better track or does it give us better kind of enforcement mechanisms once something's been known?
It gives us a better enforcement mechanism for the fact that if somebody who is, has to register as a predatory offender throughout the state, they have to notify the Bureau for Criminal Apprehension, they in turn notify the police department, this is the intent on where this person is going to move into our community. That gives us the restriction to tell that party you are not allowed per city ordinance to reside within that distance of this park, this daycare center.
So, that's the notification. The BCA notifies you that this is the registered address and you're able to then confirm you're within 1,200 feet if, should we approve the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. And then, should that notification not happen and ordinary course of police work, you become aware that there is an offender at that address, are you then able to take action as well?
Yes, if that was the case, that would be considered a non-compliant predatory offender through the state statute and that would all, that would be a felony level. The ordinance is a misdemeanor level. This is strictly to help us basically navigate where somebody is able to reside within the city. So, if a predatory offender moved into the city of Forest Lake, didn't tell the BCA or register with the BCA, they would then become non-compliant. That is then a felony charge through the county level.
Council, any concerns, follow-up questions related to the ordinance?
This seems like a no-brainer to me.
Yeah. Yeah, it does.
I, I, my only question is, don't answer this, but why did we do this last year? But it's, I think certainly something, a tool that's needed and, and certainly support the, the distance that has been selected.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion that we adopt ordinance 741, an ordinance enacting Forest Lake City Code Title 13, Chapter 130, Section 130.13, restricting the locations of predatory offenders' residence.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
With a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carries.
Your Honor? A, a point of, point of order? Yes. So, if you go to page 171 in your packet, you'll see that there's actually two motions. So, just a quick clarification on why you're having two motions for this ordinance. Moving forward, we're going to be separating out a resolution that allows summary publication of an ordinance. Historically, that had just been incorporated into whatever ordinance you passed, you also just passed that we would be not publishing the entire ordinance, but just a brief summary of that ordinance. Now that we have Jolene and she is really on top of it, we're able to be a little bit more detailed in how we're doing it. And, and so, we'll, we have a separate resolution for that. There may be situations, and I'm not suggesting this is one of them, but there may be situations where council would decide, we don't want this ordinance to be published in a summary, you know, a summary fashion, we want the entire ordinance published. This is probably not one of those situations. If it is, I think at a staff level, you know, we would have a conversation about maybe why we would suggest that and then you would not have this second motion. But generally, moving forward, if it's an ordinance, you can plan on having to pass two motions. Both Jolene and I are going to be trying to watch that so we make sure to catch, catch it and have you guys do that each time.
Okay, so you're looking for motion number two there, the motion?
I am, I'm looking for motion number two, please.
Right. The motion to approve resolution, I, I'll make that motion, to approve resolution 08-12-24-06, authorizing summary publication of ordinance 741, enacting section 130.13, restricting the location of predatory offenders' residence.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carries. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Our next item this evening is consideration of selection of a firm for our Public Works space study needs and I believe Christina, you're walking us through this?
Mayor and Council, at the June 10th meeting, you authorized the issuance of a request for proposals for the Public Works Facility Assessment or Space Need Study. Proposals were due July 15th and we received seven proposals. and we received seven proposals by that deadline. They ranged in cost from $18,200 to $148,480. Director Adams and I reviewed all seven proposals based upon the criteria that were outlined in that RFP and we are recommending tonight that you would award the contract to Wold. They were not the lowest proposal, but we felt that for the extra $1,700 that they offered much more, many more council meetings and stuff as you work through this. While the other, the top scoring one was Ortl, we couldn't justify double, more than double the cost. At this stage, it's a very preliminary kind of boxes on sheets of paper kind of approach. You certainly may take a different approach once you get to hiring the actual architectural and design of the facility. So that's kind of how we landed where we did at not the cheapest, but also not the highest scoring one either. We felt like those things balanced out. So we're looking tonight for you to authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into a contract with Wold after it's been reviewed by the city attorney. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Christina. Counsel, any questions you might have? Also seemed fairly straightforward. Nice to have a nice path forward. Ready for a motion if anyone's ready?
I make a motion to authorize the mayor and the clerk to enter into a contract with Wold for the public workspace needs study after the city attorney reviews it.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, motion carries. That is the end of our action agenda for this evening. We are going to move into a discussion topic and a workshop session on cannabis. Just to note that anything that we talk about in this meeting is, that requires official action is going to come back before council for an official vote. This is a more informal working session. If you have been following this topic, immediately after the last round of legislative changes, we did take some action as a council and it has been a while since we have kind of reconsidered our next steps. This is that next consideration of those next steps starting to shape what is cannabis going to look like here in Forest Lake. And again, I would envision that this to be part, part one of a several-step conversation on us being prepared for the cannabis regulations that take effect. So Amanda, floor is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor, counsel. Just waiting for the presentation to load up. We're hoping. Should be coming. Anyone's monitor, is anything popping? Well, it's a good thing I printed paper copies. I'll keep working on it.
Okay, I'm going to grab my laptop because I don't remember what I said.
Thank you.
It's acting like there's a short somewhere. Or somebody's got a switch, they're just messing with you. I think Ryan's got a switch.
He's awfully quiet down there, must be him.
Let me just turn it off for you.
Yeah.
Is it like the old school TVs?
Okay, so just a quick agenda overview for what I will be speaking about tonight. We'll talk about the cannabis legislation summary to date, just a reminder of where we've been, what happened in 2024, and then policy discussion. So we'll be looking for some feedback from council. That staff can go back and bring forth some future ordinances and some other things for you. So as a reminder, in 2022, that was when we saw the first sort of legalization of THC-related products. In 2022, the legislature legalized hemp-derived cannabinoids. Oh, look, we've got it. Do you want me to use my clicker?
Try, see if that works from there.
Yay, we're here, nice work. Okay, so that's where we were allowed, what was legalized was edibles, beverages, and like ointments. That statute, those statutes, those set of statutes did include a kind of smaller amount of THC per serving, five milligrams. Oh, I got to sub that again on my screen because it's not moving. Okay, in the 2022 edibles law, there was not licensing for these products and there really wasn't a whole lot of robust sort of regulation for these products. A lot of cities created their own licensing schemes. A lot of cities enacted moratoriums. And there was a lot of confusion about what we just legalized. A lot of people thought it was cannabis. It actually was not, as I said, it's these hemp, hemp-derived cannabinoids. The city of Forest Lake did implement a one-year moratorium on these edible products, these hemp-derived products that was passed in 2022 and expired in 2023. These are some examples of what was allowed under that 2022 law. I think you've seen these pictures before. The most popular item to come out of 2022 is the THC beverages. In 2023, we fully legalized adult-use cannabis. So this is the actual marijuana product. We created a new office, the Office of Cannabis Management, and we limited the city's ability to regulate cannabis products. We reduced or removed criminal penalties related to cannabis. Marijuana is no longer a Schedule I drug in the state. It is importantly, a Schedule I drug still federally. And we also created two types of license holders for these future cannabis licenses, your standard license holder and then a social equity applicant. And there was also a lot of grant programs and financial assistance for those social equity applicants. These are examples of some products that were allowed under the 2023 law. So you'll notice the picture on the right, that is your actual like flower products or the plant itself. And then the products on the left are the edibles from cannabis. You'll notice that the products on the right really don't look that different from the hemp-derived products that were passed the year before. So right now, this is the running list of the licenses, excuse me, the businesses that the Office of Cannabis Management will be licensing, starting in 2025, January of 2025. Initially, it was just cannabis-related businesses. This year, they did add the hemp-derived THC businesses. Those will be licensed through the Office of Cannabis Management as well. So let's talk about the hemp-derived products for a minute because there's, there is some sort of universal confusion around these. It's important to understand that from the very beginning, they're different. Hemp-derived is legal, right? It's a legal product. Cannabis is not federally a legal product. And so from that sort of initial top line stems a lot of the reasons why they're treated differently at the state level. For example, you cannot transport cannabis products across the state, across the state line. So if you're going to sell cannabis products here, you need to grow it here, manufacture it here, process it here. That's not true for the hemp-derived. That can, you know, transport via interstate commerce. In addition to that, many financial institutions do not accept payment for cannabis-related products. So it's primarily a cash-only business. That is not true with the hemp-derived because they don't have that federal restriction. And so just all kinds of, you start to think about all the ways that it's going to infiltrate. I think that's important to keep in mind that although from a casual consumer perspective, there probably isn't a big difference between grabbing a pack of hemp-derived gummies and grabbing a pack of cannabis-derived gummies, there is from a regulation perspective. In addition, and I think this is another thing to keep in mind, is that right now liquor stores are able to sell THC beverages with their liquor license. So if they have an off-sale liquor license, they can sell that. They don't need to get an additional license and it appears as though they will not need to get an additional license. Their liquor license will cover that because it is listed as a permitted product in state statute. Likewise, for on-sale liquor, so consumption in a bar or a restaurant, they have a little more hoops to jump through, but it's very similar in that if they have an on-sale liquor license, they've registered with the Office of Cannabis Management, they are able to sell those products as well for consumption onsite. It is not immediately clear if OCM, the Office of Cannabis Management, is going to require liquors, excuse me, bars and restaurants to get some sort of additional license? Or if they are just going to, like the off-sale liquor, say if you have an on-sale liquor, you're allowed to sell these THC beverages? That has become a bit confusing because I think cities that have been more aggressive in their moratoriums or more aggressive in their restrictions maybe did not understand that they did not have the legal authority to prevent liquor stores from selling THC beverages. And I think some of them would argue that they still do have that authority, but the more recent guidance is we don't. If they have, if we're willing to give them a liquor license, because, you know, we do the liquor licenses. If we're willing to give them a liquor license and we're willing to allow a liquor store in that zoning district, then by right, they are allowed to sell THC beverages. Likewise, there's a little more ability to regulate around bars and restaurants, but it appears as though it's sort of shifting that same way as the off-sale liquor stores. I just bring that up because I think there is some confusion in the community around why am I seeing these? Or I thought these weren't legal? Or I thought they weren't allowed here, some of that.
So the THC beverage a liquor store can sell, but they cannot sell a THC gummy?
Correct.
So it's all just whatever the vehicle, it's based on what the vehicle of consumption is?
Correct, they would need to get a separate approval to be able to sell the THC gummy.
Confusing.
Correct.
But if they have a tobacco license as well, then can they?
No, so the tobacco license is not, for whatever reason, they didn't put language into the tobacco statutes to allow that as a permitted substance. So that goes completely through the Office of Cannabis Management. So to date, as I mentioned, you did have a THC ordinance that expired in 2023. That was intentional, the council, you know, elected to not renew that and focused instead on the cannabis. There is a current interim ordinance prohibiting cannabis businesses from opening in the city. That's any cannabis business. So that's retail, that's manufacturing, that's cultivating, that's everything. And then we also have an ordinance on the books that prohibits the use of cannabis in public places. Technically, the law does prohibit cannabis use in public, but the way that the law was written was poor. And so in order to be enforceable, we need to draft an ordinance to enforce it. Okay, so what happened this summer at the legislature? This summer, they instituted some caps for the licenses that can be issued, the number of licenses that can be issued by July 1st of 2026. The Office of Cannabis Management was supposed to do a sort of statewide saturation study and figure out what the supply and demand was going to look like for cannabis. It was supposed to be fairly involved. They did not do that. Instead, they put a couple of surveys up where they asked people where they bought their drugs. And overwhelmingly, the response was my drug dealer? I'm not making this up. So then they just sort of threw some numbers at the wall and that's where they got these caps from.
And those are statewide caps?
These are statewide caps. So in the state, by July of 2026, there can be a max of 50 cultivator licenses. So those are the people who are growing cannabis. 24 manufacturing licenses, 125 retailers, and 100 mezzo businesses. If you remember, the mezzo business is sort of the farm-to-table concept, but for cannabis. So you'd be growing it onsite, processing it onsite, selling it onsite, and then hypothetically, somebody could consume it onsite, sort of like a taproom.
And this is, requires legislative action to change? Those numbers or is this an administrative?
I mean, no, this is legislation, this is in the statute. But these are what they're allowing through 2026. Now, it gets a little more complicated because what they also did this year is they changed the statute to say that at least half of every type of license must go to a social equity applicant. So let's take that first one, the cannabis cultivator licenses for 50. If they only have 10 social equity applicants that apply and get a license, they can only issue 10 licenses to non-social equity applicants. So in any event, it will never be, the amount of standard applicant licenses will never exceed the amount of social equity applicant licenses. Does that make sense? I mean, not does that make sense? Are you tracking what I'm saying?
Understand what you're saying.
Okay, all right. Okay, social equity applicants. So initially, they had a point scoring system. I believe I told you all about their point scoring system where if you had a, if you were convicted of a cannabis-related drug crime, you got extra points. If a family member was convicted of a crime, they got extra points. If you lived in an area that had been, had a greater disenfranchisement by the, by drug enforcement, you got points. There was a lot of various ways to get points. And then this scoring system, essentially the higher number of points, the greater likelihood you became a social equity applicant. They did away with that system and now they're just having a minimum qualification standard. So if you sort of check enough of the boxes, you're considered a social equity applicant. Those minimum standards are basically the exact same scoring items that they had. They're just now, they don't have a number value attached to them and it's just, if you can check a couple of boxes. They do have a lottery system in place in the event that they have more applicants than licenses. I'm not sure if this is where I talk, yeah, here we go, perfect. So let's talk about what sort of already happened in this arena as well. In 2024, they announced that they were going to allow something called a preapproval license. A preapproval license is only eligible to a social equity applicant. And basically, what it does is it allows a social equity applicant to provide proof that they qualify as a social equity applicant to OCM. OCM will look through that and confirm that they do in fact qualify to be a social equity applicant. They need to then provide all of the other items that are required to get a license, you know, depending upon which license they're looking for. And then OCM will issue them something called a preapproval. And what that does is that allows that social equity applicant to go to banks to get financing, to come to cities to get, you know, any approvals that a city may have for these types of businesses, you know, to go to a landlord and show that they want to lease a space, et cetera, et cetera. It's essentially the ability for the social equity applicants to show that they really can get this business going. So the licensees needed to apply, that period ended today. What I, what we know is there was sort of a, an even like pre-preapproval thing because the social equity applicants were struggling with how to apply to show that they were a social equity applicant. So they had to back up even like another half a step. It sounds like it's a bit of a mess. And so it's not really clear what that's going to look like or how quickly they would be issuing these preapproval letters. So any questions about that? Okay, so the preapproval does not allow them to open a business, importantly. It just basically means that once licenses go online in January of 2025, they'll be able to get that license. It'll just convert to a license and they should be able to open the business. There was also some confusion this summer around a cannabis cultivator license, so that's the growers. And so technically, the statute does allow a social equity applicant only to, with a preapproval, to open and start growing cannabis before January of 2025. But they must meet any local rules. So if you're a city that has restrictions in place, they have to conform to that. And they must meet all of the current requirements for a medical cannabis cultivator. And here's where, from a practical perspective, it's almost impossible. The medical cultivator requirements right now in state statute are robust, very robust. And so if what we have observed is that the social equity applicants are needing all of this kind of extra help to be able to get a license, it seems highly unlikely that then they would be able to navigate the fairly complicated web of rules for the medical cannabis. That's how it's structured right now. It's anybody's guess what's going to happen between now and January 1st. This is in statute, though. So the problem for OCM is I'm not sure how they're going to be able to water down some of these requirements to get these cultivators going. And as I mentioned, this is important because we can't sell it if we can't grow it. So if you're looking to become a retailer, there's nothing for you to grow until there's, or excuse me, there's nothing for you to sell until something's been grown and processed and prepared. And my understanding is the growing cycle for the plants is four months. I'm concerned about how much I know about cannabis at this point in my life. Okay, so they also put caps on these preapproval licenses. So they weren't giving out very many of these, as you can see. Yeah, these are just the caps that they put on these preapprovals. One of the things that the original statute allowed One of the things that the original statute allowed was a municipal cannabis location. So a city could open up a cannabis store similar to like a municipal liquor store, although it's different. Because we would be in the business of selling something that is a cash-only business and, you know, does, has a lot of issues around getting insurance and all kinds of of things. I think initially, cities thought it could be potentially something to either keep other cannabis businesses out because they could limit to, you know, one business and they'd be the business. Or it was potentially looked at as maybe an easier moneymaker. I do not think it's an easier moneymaker based on just the complicated web of rules and restrictions and and how it is, how it works. And secondarily, you cannot use it as a license minimum. So if the city wanted to cap the number of cannabis retailers in the city, and we also wanted to have a municipal liquor store, municipal cannabis store, our municipal cannabis cannabis store would not count against the cap. So let's talk about the local controls and powers that either existed before 2024 or were beefed up in 2024. We lost a little bit in 2024, so we won't talk about that. Okay, so we get to slash have to certify an application. What that means is an application, you know, processes through OCM to start a cannabis business. They will send the city a copy of that to confirm. We would confirm that it conforms with our zoning code, with our, you know, any sort of restrictions that we would have. We are also able to check and make sure that the location meets state and fire code and that they've paid all property taxes. So we, yes, the property taxes is actually a helpful thing.
Is this a requirement? We need to do this, or is this something we can opt in to do if we choose?
This is a, we have to, we have 30 days to certify it, or it's sort of deemed automatically approved at the city level. So we do have to do something. Silence means we've accepted it. But we have the option of being a little bit more robust in how we check the business to make sure that it's conforming with, like I said, state fire codes, state building code, fire code, up to date on taxes, you know, those kinds of things.
This really, I mean, beyond the tax check, this also just gives us an ability to leapfrog ahead of any zoning or building code issues, right?
Yeah, and it allows us to know that this business is coming, right? So now we we know where they're coming from, which I think will be helpful from a public safety perspective because this is a cash-only business. And so we have some some security and some safety concerns that it would be good for the police to know. OCM has created an expedited complaint process for local governments. So we sort of have a bat line that we get to send our complaints directly to them, and they have seven days to respond to a complaint, and they have 30 days to come out and perform the necessary inspections. Well, maybe I bumped something. Can you click it to the next slide? Yeah, perfect. Okay, registration. So registration is half-required, half-optional. And by that, I mean, we are, we are required to register all of the retail businesses. So that's going to be your straight retailers and your mezzo business or your micro business that's growing it and then selling it where they grow it. We must register all of the retail businesses. We can choose to limit the number of retail businesses if we want to. The minimum that we are allowed to to allow within the city is one per 12,500 residents. We are under 25,000 residents, so we would need to require at least one retail location in in the city. We're allowed to charge a fee. It's 500, about 500 bucks for the initial fee and $1,000 for renewal fees, but there's some, there's some caveats to that. We do have the ability to designate the county as the governing body, the governing entity that would register these businesses. If the city chooses to do that, we may not limit the number of retail shops that we get. So our ability to limit is only if we're also willing to register. We are not required to register non-retail shops, so those are going to be your cultivators, your manufacturers, things like that. But we can. It appears we can if we want to.
What's the purpose of registering?
I don't know, because we're already getting the initial application and we're having to certify that.
Because we get that, even if we aren't registering, we still get the step above, right?
We still get the step above. This is another, you know, this is, I'm not entirely sure what this does other than here's where, here's why it matters for us. I think this is what I, I'm, yes, compliance checks. Okay, if we decide that we want to take on the registration, that means that we also have to be responsible for the compliance checks. And the compliance checks are two different types. One is just your standard age verification compliance checks, like we do with liquor and tobacco, right? Where the, where the police send in an underaged person to see if they can buy products illegally. The other compliance checks are an annual compliance check where same thing, the PD would need to go in and they would need to confirm that they have the correct systems for identifying people because the systems for IDing in these shops is dramatically different than the systems for identification in a liquor store. It's just dramatically different. So making sure that they're complying with that system, making sure that they're complying with all of the security systems that are required in the statute. You need to have some double-door situations and and vestibules and where your product is located is is more, much more complicated. And they also need to do product compliance, meaning that they need to make sure that all of the product on the shelves is labeled appropriately and it's legal to be sold because there are limitations on the amount of THC per serving, right? So what I'm saying is it's complicated, very complicated. And it's not necessarily something that we would have the, necessarily the resources to be able to train up officers to be able to know what they're looking for. So from that perspective, I think it's probably worth at least looking at. What would it look like if we had the county take over registration?
Because if we were doing the compliance check, we don't have the enforcement. We don't, we aren't the enforcing body for those violations, right? They're not our regulations?
Well, correct, and yes and no. So so yes, in that we would provide that information to OCM, but and we can sort of temporarily suspend somebody's license, but only for 30 days. OCM then would be the the entity that would take over. They would decide if they agreed, and then they would do an investigation and then decide if this person actually loses their license or if they actually have a violation. It's messy.
So the county, if we go with the county, we cannot limit the number of them, but can we still limit where they're located?
Yes.
Away from parks and schools and all that?
Yes, yes. So you can absolutely limit location without limiting number if you if you go to the county. Okay, so, so that's the registration. This is one of the the systems that is absolutely still being worked out by OCM. But based on some of the new information that came out this year, I think initially, cities wanted to keep that registration. And unless you're a city that really wants to limit your number, there seems to be, it might be beneficial to sort of punt that up to the county level. The other thing to keep in mind is with the maximum number of licenses that the whole state gets for these different types of businesses, the the likelihood that five of them are popping up anywhere is zero. Okay, I guess I already talked about these compliance checks. Reasonable restrictions. So yes, we can adopt an ordinance that places reasonable restrictions on time, place, and manner of operating the cannabis business. So we can put it, they actually have the distance that you're allowed to put it from schools and parks in the statute. I don't know why they did that, but so we can put it 1,000 feet from schools, 500 feet from a park, and we can also only permit it in certain zoning districts. And then another thing that we could do is if we wanted to limit their hours. So if we wanted to say they had to close by a certain time. Again, I would go back to the reason that you might want to consider that is because this is a cash business. And so from a burglary robbery perspective, these are vulnerable businesses. So that's an, that's where we landed at the end of of the legislative session in 2024. A week ago, the OCM did put out, two weeks ago now, maybe, did put out their first sort of round of rules. So we have the statute. The statute said, make the rules for how this program's going to work. They put out their first round of of rules. The local portion was one page, and it had no information that was different from the statute or new information. So so we'll wait and see what else they come up with. So the first policy question that I have for council for tonight is around, do you want to limit the number of retail locations? And if you recall, the retail locations include the mezzo business, the micro business, and just the straight retail shop.
What if we want to designate to the county? Is question one even valid?
Nope.
Okay.
I wasn't sure which one you needed, because if you needed to limit, then you can't, you know, so it's chicken egg. Which one?
And the total statewide number of retail businesses was?
I believe it's 125.
125, but only if they can find half.
Seventy-five, social equity.
Social equity.
There's also the mezzo businesses.
Mezzo and micro businesses have caps too, and I think one is 100. And they might both be 100. Again, I don't see them reaching their maximums because that would would mean that that many of social equity applicants.
So I guess Chief Peterson, how do you, can you, how would we, how would this work? I mean, you have more staff, right? Or how would this work for your department to try to regulate these things? Go in, do inspections, everything that they're asking in?
So when Amanda presented this to us a few months ago, my head was spinning, and I had those same questions. And I think there's a lot of answers that we don't know yet on how this is going to work. So it's really difficult for me to answer that question until we really see it and understand it. You know, when you look at compliance checks, do we do those? Yes. It would be very interesting to try to figure out what is what in the product? And is it the correct product, is it not? Or what's the, you know, the potency and all those types of things? So there's just a lot of questions out there, and unfortunately, we're not getting a ton of, you know, we're getting some. And Amanda, it is amazing how much knowledgeable you are on this. And honestly, I was listening to her the first time. Now I'm catching a little bit more.
Yeah.
Getting it. But yeah, it's it's going to be interesting for any law enforcement agency to enforce this.
So then Amanda, thanks. Amanda, if if we do this, is it a certain, if we give it to the county for a year and then have the opportunity to take it back, or what's that look like?
Your honor, counsel, that's a great question and unclear. It would mean that the county would have to be agreeable to give it back to us. One thing, I apologize, one thing that I did not include in here was money. So there's a 10% tax on all cannabis products. And the sort of local regulation regulator is going to get 10% of that. And the rest of it is going into the general fund.
10% of 10%.
10% of 10%. So so that would be going, if we are not doing the registration, then that money goes to the county because they'd be doing the compliance checks.
Well, I gotta believe that the county's gonna have to staff up because they've got other communities that they're going to be serving. And so, I mean, is there a path where we could just contract them to take on that piece of it? Because they're already going to have the expertise and the staffing to do it, and obviously for a fee. But I mean, I guess to question number one, I would like to maintain some control at the local level on the number of retail licenses. Well, we're talking about 125. That's the 18-month window. I mean, I'm thinking more five years down the road. And I would love for the city to maintain that control if there's a path where the county can do some of that compliance check.
Yeah, I I'm struggling a little bit on wanting to limit the number of licenses. We don't do that for tobacco and alcohol today. And I just keep, and and there's a lot we don't know with this product, but I just keep thinking about, you know, five years down the road, it's going to be, you know, everyday course of business. And are we, because we don't do that, we let the market do the regulation of number of licenses. That said, we also have some control over those licenses that we don't have here. Be nice to know if we had options to change that. There's also going to be a, just a market limiter, just based on the number of statewide licenses in the near term. That I'm not, I'm just, I'm not seeing a strong reason for us to limit the licenses. What I'm, this question about designating the county, I'm I'm concerned about us having the compliance, us having the compliance responsibility. That product knowledge, it's, it's, it's a little bit like regulating pharmaceuticals. Like the the formulary changes all the time. And there's a, there's a, yes, there might be some revenue that comes from the licensing, but you've also talking about building an expertise that we don't have today. And of our investments in staff and education, I'm just not sure this topic is what we want to make that investment in. So the county's doing that already. I don't know if I'm, I just, I'm not sure we, what we, kind of what that cost benefit is of us doing that.
Christina, I know that you had a conversation with the county. Would they, would they be interested in contracting, or was it they wanted it all, if they were going to do that?
You know, they're still very early on in their conversations too, but I would guess they're not going to do it for you any cheaper than they're doing it for any other city. So it's essentially going to be the same, would be my guess. I don't know that they, I mean, I've never known the county to give one city a break over another. So we can call it contracting, but your fee will probably be what they would get under statute, would be my guess.
So the fee being 10% of the 10%.
Correct.
So then the only upside is that we still maintain some control over how many, the registration.
Control over the registration, sort of, but we don't really have a, it's a paperwork. There is no criteria. We 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 know that we will know they exist, but there really isn't any sort of underwriting that we get to do or any sort of vetting. That's.
Well, it's a, yeah, it's the number, right?
Oh.
Only one per 12,5.
Yeah, yeah.
If you're going to control the locations, that's going to kind of determine how many is going to be out there too, depending on how tight we want to get that.
Yeah, I think I think there's plenty of opportunity to control it based on that, based on parks and in business, you know, commercial areas and that. And then just the overall, just the cost to get into this business, it's cash. And so it's not like everyone who has this dream of opening, it's going to be tough to entry, it's going to be tough to get into this. And so I I think the market controls itself at that point, and it's not going to be this crazy number, I wouldn't suspect.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
So I'm hearing that, do you want a little more information around possible hybrid options with the county? Or you, or no, county is an, or that, that yes. Go ahead and give the county the the brain damage of the inspections.
Maybe it is an, maybe maybe the first question, though, is the, do we want to limit the number of licenses? Because if we don't want to limit the number of licenses, then the question with the county becomes a little bit easier. But if we want to limit the licenses, then the county's not an option. Right?
It would be nice, you know, it'd be, you know, this is five people's opinions. It'd be nice somehow to get this out publicly so that the residents can speak to what they would prefer. Do they want to limit on those? I mean, just because I may or may not, it's really what what the residents want. I don't know how you get the education out to get that feedback.
That's the hard part is the complication, right? The, you know, resident feedback on it, I think, is going to be around, more around personal feelings of the legislation. Getting to this level of nuance for regulation, I think it's going to be hard to get feedback.
Staff's recommendation is you give it to the county.
I I'm, it makes sense. I mean, it'd be nice to know if you knew. I'm sure the state has done some kind of run numbers where they know what maybe that 10% of 10% could be, like dollar-wise, what that, but that would be, if it would be, we could find out if the county's willing to take it for five years with the opportunity to bring it back if if we find out that it is a potential revenue general or even neutral.
And maybe I could, if I could kind of maybe rephrase this too. So the county has sent out. So the county has sent out an example, I think, potential contract or something like that at a high level or resolution or something. Want to say they maybe modeled it off of Hennepin County if I'm remembering. Maybe what we need tonight is just to know if you want us to go down that path, you'll see the language, maybe that will provide some clarity, know where we might need to negotiate. Is that helpful to kind of reframe Amanda's question that way? Is, you know, do we want to even go down that path? And then maybe there are those details that need to be worked out? That?
So restate that again, please?
Um, instead of, you know, do you want the, to just turn it over to the county? It's more, do you want staff to start pursuing that to see what it looks like? And we, you know, you're going to have to approve some type of agreement with the county before that would happen. I think if the answer is a no, you for sure want to have it here, then we don't spend our time doing that. But if there's interest and it's the details of what that relationship is, then maybe that's the direction that we need for tonight to know the next step.
That's, that's the route I'd like to go because if we give to them, I think the chances of them giving it back to us, since they know if it's a revenue generator is slim to none. But if we maintain control and contract with them for the price of admission, you know, at least then we retain control. And maybe at some point we're like, you know, just take it on. But it just gives us the chance to see it.
I think also, I mean, there's very few contracts that are, or relationships that don't change over time. And so I think it's the, I'd find it hard to, well, I'm surprised by multiple things on this, this topic, but it seems unusual that this is a decision that once we've made, it's just indefinite and there's no ever, not ever a coming back period, right? Usually, you know, we find it's a three-year agreement or a five-year agreement, not something that's indefinite.
Or it might just be a longer notice provision than what you're used to, you know, like it might be an 18-month notice that you'd have to tell them you're, you know, taking it back just from the staffing perspective, that kind of thing, yeah.
That's how use, most, I mean, almost everything we work with on the county is, right? It's some sort of.
Some sort of JPA.
Election services, right? Like contracting with us for a number of years. Let's, I, I think that's maybe the, one of the questions that would help us is, is this a forever decision or is this a decision that is three years, five years? What does that timeframe look like?
Yeah. Okay, I, I feel like, I feel like we have enough direction for this and to be able to bring something back for another discussion and kind of see what the parameters of the box are with some sort of a relationship with the county, whatever that might look like.
Amanda, do you have any sense of other cities that your firm represents, what direction they're going in yet?
So several of our cities are definitely wanting to be more restrictive and they want to limit the number and so they are keeping it because of that. I'm not sure that everybody understands the depth of these compliance checks. That was language that was not picked up until more recently. It was in there, but to be fair, there's a lot in there and so I understand why it was overlooked. I would guess that cities are going to start to transition back over to the county and just the sheer realities of the market. This is just not something where a store is popping up at every corner because to your point earlier, they're so expensive to start. And there's just, who knows what the actual demand is? Okay, so next sort of policy piece of this framework that, that we can build out is if you want an ordinance with reasonable regulations. So these are going to be hours of operation, location, zoning districts. Hold your thoughts for one second because it sort of ties out with the zoning. So we can have just sort of rules around these businesses, right? That's not a zoning ordinance, it's just literally sort of a performance standards kind of type ordinance for these businesses. But we can also do a zoning ordinance. And in the zoning ordinance, we can zone them into specific districts. So it would make sense for cultivators to be, you know, probably not near residential because we have odor issues, right? Same thing with manufacturing, you know, retail obviously makes sense in business districts. But then we can also make these conditional uses. And so by making them conditional uses versus permitted uses, then they have to come before the city council to get a conditional use permit. And I am recommending that you consider making these conditional uses because of odor and security. So what we know about mature marijuana plants is they smell bad. And if you have them in an indoor facility and you are able to have odor mitigation, you can mitigate for that, but that does not work if you are growing these outdoors or if you are growing them in more of like a greenhouse situation, then you definitely have more odor issues. Cottage Grove, one of those cities that I work in, they do have a, I guess it'd be a cannabis cultivator, it's medical cannabis right now, but it's completely indoors. And they had to spend a lot of money on their odor mitigation system to make sure that they weren't putting that kind of skunky smell out into the neighborhood. And, and so from, for those types of businesses, the cultivator, the manufacturer, I would recommend that they are conditional uses so that you have the ability to put some conditions around it to protect the neighbors from nuisance, right? Smell. Secondarily, I would argue that the retail businesses, these mezzo businesses, micro businesses should also be conditional uses because of the security concerns, because of the cash. And so then that allows the city to have a little bit more involvement in what is your security plan? What, you know, what is, what does that look like? What's your, what are your cash drop offs, delivery, you know, those types of things that just allows a little bit more information for the police so that they are better educated in the event of, of a burglary or a robbery? And then also to make sure that the business is being run correctly and, you know, and safely. There are restrictions and rules in the statute for a security, but they pulled back some of those this year and so they made it less detailed, which I think then sort of opens the door for cities to be more detailed in a CUP. So going back to the original question is, is an ordinance that sort of establishes generic performance standards or hours of operation, location, and then also just generally zoning these and/or making them conditional uses in the zoning districts that, you know, they fit in? What are your thoughts on those topics?
Council thoughts? Conditional uses?
That kind of goes hand in hand with restricting the number at first to find out where this is going to go because you could always change it. But the conditional use thing is probably not a bad idea. You can actually look into it and, and see what you want to do about it, you know, maybe add some things.
Yeah.
So some things make sense, see what other cities are doing there too. This is all brand new.
All brand new.
We're scratching at the surface here, so. But I, I do think that there'd be nothing wrong with having some restrictions at first to see just where this thing is going to go. You can always open it up.
So yes, conditional uses. Do you need something more specific from us on this, on the zoning or is, I mean, what you've said makes, makes sense around retail and retail and agricultural for some of the growing operations. I can't imagine we would argue anything different, council. I, that seems like it just makes sense, like how does this fit into our current zoning plan?
Yeah. So then what will happen next is staff, hi Abby. Staff will, will work on coming back with, you know, what zoning districts it makes sense to have this as conditional uses and they will come back as conditional uses. And, and, and then I think then in terms of this ordinance where it would be hours, distances from schools, parks, I think that's good, but I think it's probably overlapping quite a bit with, with what's already being created. So we would look at maybe incorporating that in. Potentially we could do, these are conditional uses and these are just sort of standard conditions that are always required, must be X amount of feet from schools and parks and hours of operation or something. Some of that can be addressed in a CUP, if that's okay with council. Okay. One thing that I wanted to comment on this, and this is where I think the community is going to get a little confused, if we, if we are allowing liquor stores in the district by default, the THC beverages will be in that district because they can, you know, they can sell, sell those and same thing with bars. So I just think, and same thing eventually most likely like with the tobacco shops that have THC in the windows, I'm sure people are confused if we said that we didn't want it in the downtown, that would sort of be related to cannabis, right? That's not really related to the hemp derived edibles. And so there can be some confusion on the part of the public around, I thought this wasn't allowed here, but there's a store that sells this stuff here and it's, because it's not that stuff, it's the legal hemp stuff. So that's just a heads up for you guys if you're getting calls or complaints of why there's a difference on that. Okay, and then the municipal cannabis retail store, we already have talked about this, but I, I'm assuming there really isn't appetite on the part of council to pursue a cannabis retail store. If you're still on the fence, what I've been told is that the initial investment is anywhere between $500,000 and $1 million.
Pass. Move on.
Yes, I figured that.
Vote on that tonight.
Okay, then that's it. So unless you have any other questions, I think I have what I'm looking for from you guys. Perfect. Thank you.
Let's move into staff updates and we'll start with Jolene.
Thank you, mayor. So tomorrow's the statewide primary. We have all five of our polling locations ready to go according to our partners at the county. City Hall here, the city center is a polling location, so we'll see a little influx of voters and foot traffic tomorrow during the day. Tomorrow's also the last day of candidacy filing, so I will be here till 5:00 PM, which is what the statute requires of us to accept any affidavits of candidacy. And then the withdrawal period for candidates will end on Thursday at 5:00 PM.
Thank you, Jolene. Abby?
Three more weeks of Arts in the Park. Tomorrow night, we have our second of the year Kids and Family Night. Sean and Ian Okamoto are headlining act, but we do have a special kids act, 5:30 to 6:30, which is Tricia and the Toonies, a puppeteer with large puppets, is something we haven't had yet tonight, but just want to let council be aware of that.
Thank you, Abby. Dave?
Nothing to update tonight.
And Chief Peterson?
Yeah, the only update is last Tuesday was 19 night and it was a huge success. I was down at Lakeside or Arts in the Park, hundreds and hundreds of, of kids and families stopped by and it was great seeing everyone. And I just want to thank all the police and fire and to community engagement coordinator, Julie Griffin, who really spent a lot of time putting that together and organizing the event. So another successful 19 night.
Thank you, chief. Chief Newman?
No updates unless you have questions.
Nope. I think we're good. Thank you. Amanda?
You've heard from me enough.
Christina? And Ryan?
Mayor City Council, just provide a couple of updates. Local street maintenance project, it's progressing out to ideal Ivy Wood off of Highway 97. That project's anticipated to be finished before the end of the month. The double chip seal project is starting next week on 204 Streets in Keats. County sent out some information in regards to the Broadway maintenance project. Postcard and email blast were sent out to subscribers talking about the new timeline of the project, which is anticipated construction to start in spring of 2025. There will be additional open houses and they've already engaged with the school district too. So you'll, you'll hear more about it, just wanted you to know about it, that a lot of business owners and residents in the area have already received that postcard, so you're aware of that information that's out there.
Very good. Thank you. Since we're on this side, let's start with Councilmember Erickson?
Bill, please.
Councilmember Hossneck?
Actually, I have three of them. I attended the school board meeting that took place on August 1st and a couple of noted things there, they had, they talked about, I think there's five retirements coming up, but also the donations from various people, I wanted to, almost $16,000. I think 10 grand of it was from Jean Alberg, so that, that worked great. And then on the new business, there was a fairly lengthy discussion about the proposal to include all sixth grade students at Forest Lake Area Middle School and to consolidate the Forest Lake Elementary School and the Forest View Elementary School for 25 and 26. So those are the notable things there. And then I also attended the airport commission meeting and we just went through some things with Bolton and Mink and some updates that we had for there and talked about where they're going to mow and that kind of thing and just some things that are coming up. So also I, all of us did, we attended the EDA meeting tonight, so no sense going through that, everybody was there, so.
Councilmember Berlanto?
I attended the cable commission meeting last week and we talked about the 2025 budget and looking at some policies. And then just wanted to let Abby know that I do plan to return the corn feed for the last day for Arts in the Park.
Councilmember Roberts?
No update, just a thanks to the police and fire department for last Tuesday. We had a nice gathering in our neighborhood, had Captain Hanagraf and two fire department members out and it's just great community exposure. So thank you guys both.
Excellent. No update from, from me tonight, other than I also will be at the community corn feed, so caught me in. All right, that is the end of our planned agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Someone?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose and we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.